Welcome, it's great to see such a large crowd here for our event this evening. I'm honored to be your Master of Ceremonies for those that have not met. I'm glad to have you here and I am the City Manager Darren Jordan, and honored to be a part of this occasion. As we think about tonight, the 45th inauguration ceremony for our next city commission, you know, it's an important aspect of Paducah's chapter, of Paducah's history. And the individuals that the community have elected to serve us during this next two years, or four years as the mayor is, you know, they take, I know them personally, they take that honor and that privilege serious. And so they are, and you'll hear from them later on tonight, but I know that they are excited to have you here. And then without further ado, we'll ask Reverend Lex Alum to come up and make our dedication, please.
Good evening. It is an honor to be with you this evening. Let us pray together. Eternal God, great are your works and wondrous are your ways. Throughout all time and in every space, your presence has been made known. And we praise you for the splendid variety of your creation, the many ways we affirm your presence and purpose through our different faiths, and for the freedom to do so. Mighty and merciful God, lover of justice and equity, you call us to support the weak, to help those who suffer, and to honor all people. We thank you that you call us to serve your purpose in this world. As a new year and new terms begin, bless Mayor-elect Bray and Commissioners-elect Wilson, Henderson, Smith, and Thomas, that they lead the community of Paducah alongside a multitude of others. Grant to them attributes of the strong, mutual respect in words and deed, restraint in the exercise of power, and the will for peace with justice for all. Help them welcome new ideas and to respect ones that remain. In their deliberations, bring about what is best for the people of this place. By your power, make each of us advocates for your justice and instruments of your peace, so that all may be reconciled in your beloved community. Guide us as you guide them, so that we may be joined in love and service. In the name of Almighty God, we pray, amen.
Thank you. You will notice that we are absent one of our duly-elected officials tonight. And we want to send our best wishes to Commissioner Smith, as he is recovering from an illness and not able to join us this evening. So if the next time, at this point, I would ask you to please rise as we have a Paducah fire and please represent most of our colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great love of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and everlasting.
At this time, welcome to the podium our Kentucky Supreme Court Chief Justice, Sheenett. Would you please join me in singing our national anthem?
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars threw the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
One may be seated as you wish. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, for the introduction and I know that I expressed everyone's sentiment here today when we thank you for your strong record of service and skill in leading this city amongst its team of leaders. As the first appellate district justice serving on the Kentucky Supreme Court, I was highly honored to be invited to administer our great Commonwealth's historical constitutional oath of office to the cities of Paducah's newly re-elected mayor, my friend George P. Bray, and to its three newly re-elected and returning commissioners, including my friends Sandra Wilson, Ronaldo Henderson, and Buzz, Robert Buzz Smith, who can't be with us today as you've heard. As our nation mourns the loss of former U.S. President Jimmy Carter, I am reminded that he once wrote, "To me, faith is not just a noun, but also a verb." Paraphrasing the late theologian John Wesley, President Carter also once said, "I have one life and one chance to make it count for something. My faith demands that I do whatever I can, wherever I am, whenever I can, for as long as I can, with whatever I have, to try to make a difference." In essence, his words remind us tonight that becoming a leader and leaving a positive public legacy is not achieved by politically attaining a certain title or position, but is realized by persistently, consistently, and selflessly demonstrating a compassionate personal character through kindness and service to others. In his own inaugural address in 1977, President Carter noted these outward and physical types of public ceremonies allow us, quote, "to attest once again to the inner and spiritual strength of our nation," and that civic leaders and all citizens, quote, "must adjust to changing times and still hold to unchanging principles." Four short years later, in 1981, in his farewell address, President Carter observed, "But we know that democracy is always an unfinished creation. Each generation must renew its foundations. Each generation must rediscover the meaning of this hallowed vision." As we mourn his loss, we celebrate his life. And in the words of the Book of Matthew, Chapter 25, Verse 21, "Well done, thou good and faithful servant; well done; hail and farewell." Whenever administering the oath to a group of elected public officials, I am reminded that good government has been defined as a team effort, with each player called upon to fulfill important individual and collaborative roles. In his own inaugural address spoken almost 64 years ago in 1961, the newly-elected U.S. President John F. Kennedy encouraged leaders to establish a beachhead of cooperation by laying aside differences and joining to work together to ensure that the strong remain just, that the weak remain secure, and that the peace is forever preserved. His words resonate with our own Kentucky motto, "United we stand, divided we fall." And with the wisdom once spoken by the late blind social activist Helen Keller, who said, "Alone, we can accomplish so little, but together, we can accomplish so much." Kennedy's eloquent and challenging words ring just as true for all of us today as they did to him in his time. However, way back in 2006, when former Kentucky Supreme Court Justice and then Chief Judge Sarah Combs first administered the solemn oath to me as the newest appellate judge on the 14-member Kentucky Court of Appeals, it was another part of President Kennedy's famous speech that she emphasized to me. And I pass its strong message along to my friends gathered behind me here on the podium. I offer it as a lamp unto your feet and a light unto your path as you reassume and assume your important and heavy civic responsibilities on behalf of our city of Paducah. She told me that in dealing with my fellow judges and now justices, I would be wise to remain mindful of Kennedy's advice when he noted that one's civility is not a sign of weakness and one's sincerity is always subject to proof. As you rise to achieve your noble calling seeking to serve the diverse people of the city of Paducah, may you as a group find common ground on which to stand and may you cultivate the skill of disagreeing without becoming disagreeable, divisive, and denigrating with each other or with those who you have been elected to represent. As Paducah's Board of Commissioners, may all of your meetings and discussions be guided by courtesy, cooperation, and mutual respect. And may all your decisions and actions be defined by sincerity, selflessness, and the common good. And now, having been satisfied, your elections have been appropriately certified, and knowing of no reason why you should not be administered the constitutional oath of office to begin fulfilling your duties, we will proceed. Now each time I administer the oath, I remind those so swearing or affirming that Kentucky's oath contains a reference to not having fought nor having assisted others in fighting duels with deadly weapons. But the quaint language hearkens back to a much more violent and unsettled time of our Commonwealth's rich history. Some who are familiar with the reference find the oath's language antiquated, quirky, and wholly irrelevant, while others, upon initially hearing the reference, are prone reasonably to snicker, roll their eyes, or simply shake their heads impossibly. To those taking the oath today and to those witnesses in our audience, I encourage you not to exhibit such uninformed or disrespectful behavior, but to consider soberly the historic reference's call to the sacred principle of settling disputes in civilized courts of law before independent and impartial judges rather than upon angry, violent, and bloody fields of honor which are neither very honorable nor wise. Now with that said, I will ask each of you, if you will, to stand here beside me. Yes, if you'll join me here, those who I am to administer the oath to, step to the side because this is your day and this is your oath. Though in administering the oath, others may simply recite its words and invite your affirmance, I believe it punctuates the importance of your promise and the significance of your action by requiring that you actually speak words. Only you can prove the sincerity of your words by ensuring that your walk reflects your talk. So let us begin. If you will raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me and I'll begin with me. I, George P. Bray.
I, George P. Bray.
I, Sandra Wilson.
I, Sandra Wilson.
I, Ronaldo Henderson.
I, Ronaldo Henderson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And be faithful and true
And be faithful and true.
To the Commonwealth of Kentucky
To the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully execute
And I will faithfully execute.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
The office of Mayor of the City of Paducah
The office of Mayor of the City of Paducah.
And the office of Commissioner of the City of Paducah
And the office of Commissioner of the City of Paducah.
As the case may be
As the case may be.
According to law
According to law.
And I do further solemnly swear
And I do further solemnly swear.
That since the adoption of the present constitution
Since the adoption of the present constitution.
I, being a citizen of this state
I, being a citizen of this state.
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons
And I've fought a duel with deadly weapons.
Within this state nor out of it
Within this state or out of it.
Nor have I sent or accepted
Nor have I sent or accepted.
A challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons
A challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons.
Nor have I acted as second
Nor have I acted as second.
In carrying a challenge
In carrying a challenge.
Nor aided or assisted any person
Nor aided or assisted any person.
Thus offending
Thus offending.
So help me God
So help me God.
And so help you, God, as you take on these new positions of responsibility and as your justice on the Kentucky Supreme Court, you may lower your hands. Now may I extend my hand in congratulations and best wishes for every success and happiness as you assume your new role. God bless you. At this time, I will ask Ms. Tanet Mahabir Turner to come up to authorize and officiate Duan Thomas's, Commissioner-elect Duan Thomas's oath.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tanet Mahabir Turner, and I am truly honored to stand before you today as a designated individual to officiate and swear in our newly-elected Commissioner, Duan Thomas. I just want to share a few Bible verses with you, and I'm so proud of you, Duan, as a young man who persevered and truly inspired me, and I know most of you are truly inspired by his perseverance as well. In 1 John 2:14, it says, "I have written to you, young men, because you are strong, and the word of God abides in you, and you have overcome the evil one." 1 Timothy 4:12, "Don't let anyone look down on you because you are young, but set an example for the believers in speech, in conduct, in love, in faith, and in purity." So right now, I'd love for you to join me as we officially, you know, get you in and sworn in today. So if you could just raise your right hand and you'll repeat after me. I, Duan Thomas
I, Duan Thomas.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution
Of the United States and the Constitution.
Of this Commonwealth
This Commonwealth.
And be faithful and true
And be faithful and true.
To the Commonwealth of Kentucky
To the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So long as I continue
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully execute
And that I will faithfully execute.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
The office of Commissioner
The office of Commissioner.
According to the law
According to the law.
And I do further solemnly swear
And I do further solemnly swear.
That since the adoption of the present constitution
Since the adoption of the present constitution.
I, being a citizen of this state
I, being a citizen of this state.
Have not fought a duel
Have not fought a duel.
With deadly weapons
With deadly weapons.
Within this state
Within this state.
Nor out of it
Nor out of it.
Nor have I sent or accepted
Nor have I sent or accepted.
A challenge to fight a duel
A challenge to fight a duel.
With deadly weapons
With deadly weapons.
Nor have I acted
Nor have I acted.
As second in carrying a challenge
As second in carrying a challenge.
Nor aided or assisted
Nor aided or assisted.
Any person thus offending
Any person thus offending.
So help me God
So help me God.
Congratulations to you, Duan Thomas, and we look forward to everything that's going to take from the table.
At this time, I would like the podium for some remarks. Well, first will be Mayor Bray, and then as soon as he finishes, Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner Henderson, and then Commissioner Thomas. Mayor Bray?
Good evening, everybody, and thank you. Thank you for being here. I'm really elated at all the people who are here tonight, and it really warms my heart and, you know, proves to me how important this job is, this role that I've taken. I have so many people to thank, you know, and I couldn't even begin to thank everybody. My wife is here, and anybody that knows Angie knows that she and I approached this kind of as a team. My brother Tim and his wife Debbie and my sister Mary Ruth are here. My family's been so important to my process, and I'm thankful for all the support that they've provided to me. When I took this role four years ago, I approached it, I think, a little differently than a lot of people have in the past. I've spent almost 50 years in business, and, you know, I always really have excelled and enjoyed working in a team environment. In politics, they say, politics is really anything but a team. And, but I wanted to, I wanted to approach it differently. And so I challenged each of our commissioners when we began working together to pull together and try to work as a team, because if we work as a team, then we are going to be much more successful. And we've had a lot of success in the last four years. Working with Commissioner, Mr. Sandra Wilson, who I think is in her 13th year, I'm not sure if that's right. She's probably either nodding or crossing her head behind me, but... But, you know, Commissioner Wilson has been so important to the city in her role as Chamber Executive, and she brings so much to the city. And as Mayor pro tem, she and I have worked very closely together. And she's been a big part of the team's success that we've had in the city. Commissioner Ronaldo Henderson, Ray, I'm not going to look back. It's hard for me to look out of the back of my... But Ray and I met a year or six months before I, before I was elected, and he was elected for the first time, and we sat down and we made a pact. That's how I considered that we wanted to make change. We wanted to change. We wanted positive change in this city as it related to all things of black, white, and culture. And I believe that we have accomplished that. So we've made a tremendous amount of progress. Commissioner Buzz Smith is not able to be here tonight. As many of you know, Buzz is my first cousin. And so a lot of you think, well, you know, that's kind of an inside job, you know, you're working with your cousin. But he's been one of the hardest that it's been for me to work with, and I think all the commissioners and the staff will attest to that. But, but together, you know, Buzz is so conservative and has brought so many great ideas to the city, and we have, we have, we have worked together. Commissioner Thomas, I will, I will look around at you. I pledge to, to give you every bit of support that I can to help you be successful and to help you be part of this team that we've established here in the city that's going to continue to bring this city forward. So, now, those are my remarks. I, this is the greatest, I've been in, I've been in business. I was in the private sector for 42 years. I'm starting my second term as, as your mayor, and this has been, this is the greatest honor of anything that I've been able to do in my lifetime. And I thank everybody so much for your support. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon and welcome, everyone. Thank you for taking your time out of your busy schedules during the holidays to be here to celebrate with us, because this truly is a day of celebration for us and I hope for the city as well. I'm honored and humbled to stand before you as I prepare to begin my seventh consecutive term, my 13th year as a city commissioner in a city that I love and am deeply passionate about. I want to express my gratitude to everyone who has supported me through these years, to the voters who place their trust in me, to my friends, my coworkers, and my family, my husband Ed, and our children who are all here today. Thank you for putting up signs and listening to me and being with me all along this journey. I am excited to continue to work with Mayor Bray as he begins his second term. We are committed to serving the great people of Paducah, a city rich in history, culture, and arts with so much potential. 2025 is going to be a year where we see millions of capital investment, multiple construction projects underway, from our downtown in Riverfront with our build grant, to the new downtown hotel, to the sports parks, to all of the many private investments that are going on in this community. And thank you to those who have decided to invest in our community. And thank you to the county leaders who are here today and who we work with all of the time to ensure that we are on the right track and that we are working together. Paducah is a city filled with vibrant neighborhoods that we pay a lot of attention to. We have a creative spirit and hard-working individuals. And I believe this team will work together to promote economic development and growth, enhance public safety, and continue to strive to make this the best city that we can be. We all bring different strengths and interests to our role as the mayor and a city commissioner. And to me, that makes us a stronger team to work together on behalf of the city because we see ourselves from different angles and different perspectives. I look forward to continuing to work with Commissioners Henderson and Smith, who I've worked with these past few years and feel like I know pretty well. And I look forward to getting to know you, Commissioner Thomas, and to working with you. I also want to say thank you to our city manager, Darren Jordan, our assistant city manager, Michelle Smolin, our city clerk, Lindsay Parrish, and to all of our department heads and all of our city employees. We truly have a great team that we have assembled, and we appreciate the dedication and strong work ethic of every single employee. Let's unite our efforts, inspire one another, and continue to work to create Paducah a better place to call home. Thank you once again for this opportunity to serve our city, and thank you for being here today. Thank you once again for this opportunity to serve our city, and thank you for being here today.
I wrote my remarks down so I would not feel like I was in Washington Street Church. It's going on and on and on, so I've written my remarks down so I'll be brief. We do honor God to Mayor George Bray, to Mayor Pro-Tim, Sandra Wilson, Commissioner Robert Smith and his absence, and to Commissioner Dwan Thomas, city manager Darren Jordan, city employees, and to all of you, good evening. It is good for us to be here this evening. I'm excited as I prepare to serve my third term, my fifth year, as a Paducah Commissioner. It is an honor and a privilege to get up every morning and to do the two things that I absolutely love doing. One is to serve as the senior servant of the Washington Street Church and to serve as a city commissioner of this great city. When I began this journey in 2021, I began with passion and I began with priority. The passion has not diminished and the priority has not changed. With different words and different ideas, the priority remains the same. It's all about the people. What decisions can the commission make that will benefit the masses and not just a few? I want you to know that I am indeed concerned about infrastructure, but I am equally concerned about the kind of structure that our citizens live in. I am indeed concerned about tourism, but I am equally concerned about the people who live and work here every day in the city of Paducah and they call it home. I'm concerned about the threat to DEI, but I'm equally concerned about diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city of Paducah. I'm concerned about well-put-together policies, but I'm equally concerned about policies that benefit everybody. American author and civil rights activist, the late James Baldwin, reminds us that "you cannot fix what you will not face." The reality is that we may not be able to achieve all our desires. We may not be able to achieve all of the change that we want, but that change cannot happen until people, until you, to I collectively acknowledge that there are indeed some problems, even in the midst of progress. Mayor Bray, and this current commission has worked diligently to bring some positive changes in all the areas that I have mentioned this evening. And we anxiously await, I anxiously await, future progress with our new team member, Commissioner Dwan Thomas. Again, I want to thank you to all the 4,918 citizens who cast vote for Ronaldo Henderson. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the church that I pastor and the church that I love for the last thirty-two years, and that is the Washington Street Missionary Baptist Church. And I would definitely be out of order if I did not acknowledge my wife of thirty-six years, Mrs. Sherri Henderson, of which if it had not and is not her, I wouldn't be able to do the things that I do at the church or in this community. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm ready to serve, and I am indeed excited, and I just cannot hide it. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you, Paducah, for electing me as your city commissioner. Before I begin, and I promise I won't be long, but I want to share three verses that have carried me through this journey. Psalms 23:5 says, "You prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies; you anoint my head with oil, my cup overflows." And then in Matthew 7:7, "Ask, and it will be given to you; seek, and you will find; knock, and the door will be opened to you." And finally, Revelations 3:8 says, "I know your deeds; see, I have placed before you an open door that no one can shut." This campaign was built on the foundation of Christ. I stand, I stand firm on that foundation, and I'm grateful that God has allowed me to walk through that door. Persistence, perseverance, and faith. Those three words have divined this journey. When I first ran for office four years ago, I was just twenty-one years old. Honestly, I did not have a clue what I was getting myself into. I was on spring break from college, noticed the election was coming up, and felt like some important topics weren't being addressed. So I figured out how to found my intent to run, and I ran. Looking back on that campaign and my previous commission campaign, I'm proud of how far I've come and how much I've grown, both as a leader and as a person. Since then, I've earned my master's degree in legal studies with a focus in U.S. government legislation, and I'm excited to use the knowledge I've gained to help my fellow commissioners and our mayor make the best legal-minded decisions for our community. I'm also committed to using this platform to keep our community informed and engaged. Too many people don't realize how important local government is or even what a commissioner does. The president isn't deciding if our roads get fixed or if you get new sidewalks. Those decisions are made right here at the local level. Who you choose as your commissioner and mayor affects your day-to-day life, and I believe you chose a great team this time around. Unlike other cities with city councils, Paducah's former government gives commissioners equal power to the mayor. That's an important fact to keep in mind when voting, and it's one of the reasons that local government matters so much. And for updates, you can follow me on Facebook, @ThomasForPaducah, on Instagram, TikTok, and YouTube at @Dwan_Tomass to keep up with all those updates that I'm putting out there, just a quick plug. And as I close, I want to express how grateful I am that you all believe in me. I think about my great-grandfather, James Henry Thomas, and he passed away a few years ago, but he broke barriers as the first black city councilman in Clinton, Kentucky. And his daughter went on to become the first black councilwoman in Clinton. And now, here I am, continuing the Thomas legacy by becoming the youngest city commissioner in Paducah's history at twenty-six years old. Now, and none of this would be possible without God, and none of it would be possible without my village, my mom, my grandmother, my grandfather, my aunts, my uncles, my cousins, my pastors, my friends, and two people in particular who never let me down, no matter what time of day or night or how last-minute I needed them, my fiancee Christina and my good friend Jalen Harris. Thank you. Thank you for all of your love, your support, and for trusting me to serve you. I'm excited for what's ahead for Paducah. It's time to get to work.
Mayor and Commissioner, thank you for raising your hand and standing up and saying, "I will serve." Having the ability to, the last three and a half years, working with three of you, I'm looking for a great future of also working with you, Commissioner Thomas, and our whole team here at the city of Paducah. Again, we want to thank you for joining us this evening. You've heard several themes throughout the different speeches tonight and from our, those that were swearing in. I would like to also leave you with my favorite verse of scripture, and that's from 1 Peter 4:10. And paraphrase, it says that "we've each been given a gift by God, and we're supposed to use those gifts as good stewards of God's varied grace." Whatever your pathway has been that led you here tonight, you are an important part of Paducah. Thank you for your service. Thank you for giving your gifts and your talents to our community. And I'd be remiss if I wouldn't say thank you to our excellent team that we have here, the three hundred and nearly forty-plus team members of Paducah that day in and day out show up to provide the service and efforts when we are maybe at home, in bed, at holidays, enjoying it. We have our police and our fire that are there serving us. We have our public works that are there serving us. We have our whole team that do nothing but show up to provide the best service that they can and use their gifts to the benefit of this community. So again, I say thank you for being a part of Paducah's history. Thank you for being here tonight and giving of your time. And at this time, I would ask you to please rise as we have the Paducah Fire and Police to miss the call. And again, thank you for your participation this season. We invite you to stick around, enjoy fellowship and refreshments, and also, we appreciate the music that's provided to us this evening by One Road Overstreams of Barbie and Ian Bastea. Thank you and enjoy.